What's that?
Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the steady beating of the West Valley City Council. It's July twenty second, two thousand and twenty five. We're beginning our meeting at four thirty P M in the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. Councilmember Hune, Councilmember Norfeldt, Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Whitstone, Councilmember Harmon, Councilmember Christensen, myself. We're also joined by our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamic. We have our minutes of July eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Turn those to the council for discussion or emotion. I have a motion in a second. I'll favorably say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We have our introduction of new employees. So I'll ask Craig Thomas to come and introduce his new employee. Employees.
Mayor Council, hello. Good evening. We thought we had two here, but we do have Stephanie. Stephanie wants to come forward. Two amazing new hires, two amazing people. Stephanie is joining us in the Neighborhood Services Division as a community engagement specialist. So she's joining Alex and Corinne and Tom. So a great team downstairs. Stephanie does have a lot of community engagement experience. She's got connections to West Valley. She's just amazing, and she also speaks Spanish, which is always a perk. So we love having her on the team, and she has been amazing. Is there anything you want to say? We also have Balta. He, maybe he's on his way. He is an amazing, amazing person. He's joining the Utah Cultural Celebration Team. And he is part of our custodial staff. Hopefully, he has a chance to get here. I think he's on his way possibly. But he also just comes with a great deal of experience. It's weird to find somebody that actually just says, I love cleaning. So he's making a huge difference for us, and he's been awesome. He walks around the building with a smile. He gets into his zone, not so much of a smile, but then when he's with people, he's always got a smile on his face. He's amazing. So we're very fortunate to have these two new individuals join us. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we'll ask Dan Johnson to introduce his new employees.
We'll start with Alan. This is Alan Stoddard, right here in the dark blue shirt. Alan is our stimulus writer over in the Fleet Division. He's the intake friendly face when our, all of our department customers arrive and helps with the initial assessment of what needs to be done on the vehicles. And we're really grateful to have him. He's got a lot of great experience, and he brings a lot and adds a lot to our team. And then Wayne and Trent are both engineering inspectors that'll work with Kobe and his group on construction inspection on roadways and developments and drainage projects. And so all in all, we're very happy with this group of new employees, and we look forward to the good things they'll do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to all the new employees. Right, we now have. We'll let Craig come up and show us, tell about his new employee.
Sorry, I already introduced you.
When you're at the cultural center, hopefully you'll see him. He is working nights and weekends. He's filling a gap within the building that is, you know, really important for us. But he's a West Valley resident as well. So this is Balta.
Yeah, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now go to our review of the agendas for this evening. We have two items added to tonight's regular meeting. So the first is our annual proclamation for National Night Out. Is there a council member that would like to read that one for us? Scott will do that. And then the second, we will ask Mr. Bunderson to come up and explain the second addition.
Thank you, Mayor and Council Eric Bunderson. City Attorney. This is a consent agreement that we are asking you to study and vote tonight. Due to the, due to the timing of the transaction. And a little bit of history before I get into it. In two thousand and nine, the city received a minority interest in the Grizzlies Hockey Club LLC. We received forty percent interest in that LLC in exchange for some debt that the Grizzlies owed us. Since then, the Grizzlies have moved some things around, and they have essentially two corporations, LLCs, one that holds the franchise, and that's what we've got the forty percent part in. They've got sixty percent ownership, and then they have another LLC that holds a bunch of their assets. Now, the Grizzlies desire to leave, and they've, they've got a purchaser. And we need to give our consent in order for the majority owner in our LLC to accomplish the sale, which includes all of the Grizzly stuff, including stuff we're not involved in. So this, this is essentially a resolution from you as the Board of West Valley City, giving the majority owner the authority and power to do everything necessary to, to sell the asset. The Grizzlies have provided me with a short statement. And this, this will also go out to the press if asked, and they're just, they say that they are excited to announce their acquisition by Pro Hockey Partners LLC under the leadership of Bob O'Robo, a sponsor, a seasoned sports executive with decades of experience, particularly in professional hockey operations. Now, at this point, the attorneys for the Hockey Club and for Pro Hockey Partners LLC have asked that we not disclose the location where the hockey team is going until everything is, is all completed. So luckily, they haven't told me one way or another, so I wouldn't know, even if you, even if you tortured me. So anyway, the, the, I guess what I would say is, wh- while the council does have a choice in this, in a way, it's sort of a, and I'm practicing saying this a thousand times, but I'm not good at French. It's sort of a fait accompli. Did I say it right?
Be.
Jake?
Compli.
Okay. In the sense that, that all the other assets going away, if we were to hold out, we would have a forty percent interest in a franchise in a team that doesn't exist in West Valley anymore. So it's really just a pragmatic, pragmatic acknowledgement of reality. The, the sale will result in some money back to the city, some forty percent of that. And again, that's all part of the paperwork that's still, that's still yet to be executed. But we will, we will be receiving some money for that sale for our investment back in two thousand and nine. And that's really, that's really about it. We do approve, we do recommend the approval of this resolution this evening at the regular meeting.
Any questions? I think you explained it pretty well. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to our first public hearing, and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Pastrick for application G P three, two thousand and twenty five. Which is the update of the Fairborn Station Plan. Oh, did you get? Sorry, did you have questions on the R D A? Yeah. We studied them two weeks ago. Did you have questions on yours? Okay.
Great. Steve Pastrick, Community Development Director, and thank you, Mayor. The, this first item again is from, from city staff. It's to update the, the Fairborn Station Vision, which is part of the city's general plan. And to give you a little bit of background as to why we're, we're doing this now. So this plan actually was first adopted back in the, in the two thousands and two thousand and four, to be exact. It was later updated in two thousand and twelve. And just a few years ago, this, the legislature passed a law requiring that cities have, that are called stationary plans, which I know we've talked with the council about before. So in this case, we essentially had a plan already. And where you have a plan, you're required to have that plan be certified by Wausau-Trent Regional Council. We, in a effort to move towards certification, we asked Wausau-Trent Regional Council to, to do a review, just informal review of our plan. One of the pieces of feedback we received was to include the mall property as part of the plan. And so really, the main difference in the update, there are some other updates, but the main change I'll highlight here, this is the future land use map that's in the version from two thousand and twelve, which again focuses between twenty seventh West and thirty two hundred West. And then the, the version that's in the update includes the mall property and showing essentially commercial use along the frontage of twenty seven hundred West and Costco. And then a, a mix of uses as a possibility for the, the balance of that site. So that's the, the main difference is, as we're seeking to get certification from Wausau-Trent is to include the mall property in the plan. There are some other updates to the document in that we've accomplished a lot since two thousand and twelve. And so there are certain goals and objectives that have essentially been accomplished, so those have been updated. But, but this is the main change.
Any questions for Mr. Pastrick?
Those new apartments, are you considering very high density or?
It, it, the ones that are next to Costco are, would be that very high density if we were just to designate that by itself.
So mixed use could include residential?
Yes.
And then the changes on thirty five, it's now say commercial instead of.
Right, before.
It's because that's what's there now?
Right, exactly. That's, it's, it's actually pretty well established at this point with the, the Hotel Granger Medical.
With the new apartments being established, why wouldn't we put that as very high residential instead of lumping it in with mixed use?
We could do that. It was more just saying that that's something like that could be included as part of more investment in the mall. And so that would all be kind of grouped together, but if, if the council would prefer, we, we could show that just on that one piece.
I don't really care. I just ask some questions. It's so colorful over on the left.
It's just only two colors.
Wausau-Trent tabled their application after I went to.
They did.
You know, why?
Not sure if they're, what their plans are right now, but yeah, they, they did have a proposal that included over six hundred new units on the mall site. I think in the end, at least, our understanding now is that the, just the, the numbers don't work for them right now in terms of the, just the construction costs and everything else. So I'm not sure what sort of their end game will be in the next few years here, but yeah, right now, they're not pursuing that, or at least have put it in hold. And, and honest, we, in anticipation of their, when they submitted their application, we thought, well, they're essentially showing that mixed use, and if that gets approved, then we could then get certification and, and be on our way. But since that's been tabled, and we need to have our plan certified by the end of the year, that's why we're moving ahead now.
Okay, do you have any other questions? Thank you. Now we'll go to our public hearing. Application Z two, two thousand and twenty five. Leave the time with Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you. So this item is from Carl and Jennifer Newland, that own the property there at fifty one seventy three West, thirty five hundred South. The property's point eight six of an acre, but they're actually looking to rezone a portion of that. So it's point one six of an acre that's actually being proposed to be rezoned. And so I'll go to the next slide here. So the property outlined in red is the portion of the property that's proposed for rezoning. So essentially, you have a home that's on the site now that they've lived in and, or currently live in, and they have their son that and his family that'd like to move into that house and then build a new home on essentially the balance of the property. So they want to retain the agricultural zoning that's on the larger piece and then rezone the area around the existing home to R one seven and essentially carve that off as, as a separate lot. So essentially, what is now one lot would become two lots. So here's just a close up of that. So again, you can see the existing home. They have a, a couple of outbuildings to the south of that. Here's just again, the, the zoning map that shows the, the light green there is the agricultural zoning. And that red rectangle is the area they're looking to rezone. Just a, a plat map of the area. Just as a reminder, the property directly east was rezoned not too long ago for some smaller lot, single family. So that, that project's actually under construction right now, directly east. This is a, just a rough concept here. So you can see, so the north would be to the left. So the existing home there in the bottom left, that would be on a lot that's, they're proposing sixty five by one ten. So that'd be over seven thousand square feet. And then the balance, again, you can see where they want to have the new home there, that's kind of top and center on the balance, and they'd like to retain the agricultural zoning on, on those remaining there. So this, this is just a, a rough concept. Again, they, they didn't commit to this, but this is an idea of what they'd like to build on the, the balance of the property. And then some pictures of the existing site. So again, this is the home that's there now that they like to have their son and his family live in. So looking directly south. This is looking south again, but more towards the vacant parts. So that's where the new home would be. Then this is looking east on forty, or excuse me, thirty fifth South. You can see the construction happening, so that's that project there to the, to the east. This is looking back to the southwest. So you can see there's a detached structure there in the back. And then looking straight west on thirty fifth. And then I believe this is the last image looking to the southeast of the existing home. So in, in addition to the the zone change, there is a development agreement that's with this application. And in that, they had some commitments in terms of some repair, or just some sprucing up of the existing house. A commitment on the size of the new home being at least two thousand square feet. And they are asking for an exception on the width, and so I'll go back to that here for a minute. So the R one seven zone has a minimum frontage of seventy feet, so they're asking for a seven, or excuse me, five foot exception there for the existing lot. Or, well, what would be the, the lot for the existing home, excuse me. And then for the, the remainder, their dimensions are off a little bit. That would be eighty three and a half is what would be left. And so the agricultural zone has a minimum frontage of one hundred feet, so they're asking for an exception there, too. Now, technically, when we looked at this, there is the possibility where they could just have what we call a flag lot, where they could have a stem, if you will. You know, make the lot in front wider and maybe not as deep and do a flag that kind of goes in the back and then build a home in the back. But their preference would be that they, they actually would prefer to have the house not be that far back on the, on the second lot. So that's why they're asking for that exception. Meaning that it would be possible to do this without an exception, but, but that's why they're asking for the exception so that the, the new home could be closer to the street. See, just skimming through there, also, they would plan on setting the new home back further just to accommodate future widening. They would put in new landscaping on the existing lot, as you saw. There's the, the existing area around the, the home there needs some, some T L C there. And I believe that hits the high points of what's in the development agreement.
Any questions?
Just want to declare a conflict of interest. The Newlands are close friends of ours. And we are partners with Carl and his son in the ownership of an airplane.
Okay.
So I just wanted to let you know that I have that conflict of interest.
Thank you.
So back to the So it, it looks like in that is right on fifty two hundred West, but it's not?
It, yeah, it is not. Yeah, there's, there's, in fact.
That's what I was thinking. So it's in one lot.
Right, yeah. So you, so you can see the existing home in a red outline in red, then you have a, that property to the west.
And then the lot with the new home, the outlined area is the lot? Or does it extend out in the front?
It is, it's, it basically, it's, so the, the entire property is, goes all the way down to here and here. So the, the remainder would just be, if you subtract out the red, it would be everything that's left.
So the portion with the new home, the lot is just part of that.
Yeah, it would, it would be approximately, but right in here.
But the front of it is not agriculture? That's part of the, the frontage on thirty fifth?
It, it would be. They, they would like, so the only part that would be R one seven is what's in red. That's the only part they're asking to rezone, so it's just the area around that existing house. And then the, everything else would still be the agricultural zone.
And is the two car garage also an exception?
In this case, there, there actually is a provision in the code that says if you're taking a lot, it's less than an acre and just splitting off one lot, then there is a, an exception already in the code that says they can do a two car garage.
For the new home? Don't see any more questions. So we'll continue with the Pastrick day. We'll go to application Z three, two thousand and twenty five. She was on today.
Told me maybe I needed to get a, a drink of water. All right, our next one is an application from Tyler Jones, who's representing I H C Health Services, Inc. So this is property at thirty nine thirty West Parkway Boulevard in the Lake Park Corporate Center. And I'll describe what the initial applicant or request was, and then what the planning commission then recommended, because there is a difference. So the original request was to rezone the property from the Business Research Park Zone to the C two or General Commercial Zone. So it was, it was all of the property, which is eleven and a quarter acres. So here's the property in question. You can see it's just again, there on the north side of Parkway Boulevard. You have the existing office building that's there. It's a two-story office building and has been vacant for some time now. And then the north, just over five acres of that is undeveloped at this point. So here's just a close up of that. So again, you can see the, the parking area. And then just to orient everyone, you have the M two suites to the west of this. So that's the building just to the west. There's another vacant office building to the north. And then you have the office building for the Desert First, I believe, credit union to the, to the south of this. And with the golf course to the east. Just to, to the, the planning commission recommendation. Since the applicant did not know at the time what their plan was for the undeveloped portion, the planning commission's recommendation and what's in the ordinance for you to consider is just rezoning the developed portion of the property. So basically, the undeveloped portion there on the north side would stay zoned as is. And if, if, if you follow the planning commission's recommendation, it would just be rezoning the portion that's developed. And so the intended use here is a Salt Lake Behavioral Health would like to move their facility with it on thirty ninth South and about seventh East to, to this location. So it's a mental health hospital. Just show you a few more slides here. So that's, you know, plat map, just some pictures of the area. So this is looking, looking west. You can see the Home Two Suites out in the distance. This is looking south at the Desert First Office Building there. This is the building in question. So this is the building that's vacant where the Salt Lake Behavioral Health would like to move in. Again, the Home Two Suites close up to the west. And then this is looking across the parking lot to the north. So there's another office building out in the distance there. This is the, looking north along the east side of the building, where you see the golf course. Took, just for reference, I took a few pictures of the location in Salt Lake. So again, this is roughly thirty ninth South and seventh East. One of the reasons they're looking to move to this location is their existing location is five stories. And so just having folks having to go in between those five different levels, it's just a more efficient way for their facility to function to have the two levels, so they're not having to like go between floors constantly. Here's just a few more images of their facility in Salt Lake. Maybe that's the last one there. So again, the, the request here is to rezone what ends up being six acres, which is the developed portion of the property to C two. And the reason again is the, the B, excuse me, the Business Research Park Zone does not allow hospitals, but the C two zone does. And so this, where this is a mental health hospital, that's why they're requesting that change. Just by, just for reference, in your packet, there, we included a number of real estate listings. Just to give you an idea of, that there is quite a bit of vacancy in the Lake Park Corporate Center, so whether for sale or for lease. So this is one of several buildings that are, that are available out there.
What's the difference in their existing building in this one as far as space?
So they're, they're actually similar space wise. It's, it's more that the, the, the footprint, or if you will. And so at least the way they've described it to me is being able to have like similar functions all on the same floor, as, as opposed to having to go in between floors, just makes for a better better functionality for what they do.
Yeah, I just want to make sure they can still house the same number of people.
Yeah, yes.
Steve, we just, I think a year ago, did a rezone in this area. Kind of make everything uniform.
Right.
Can you remind us of that?
Absolutely. So prior to that, a good chunk of Lake Park, maybe two thirds, was, was zone manufacturing. And I think the reason for that was, you know, if you go way back to the nineties when, back then Zion Securities was looking at developing the property and doing an office park, there were, it's like, well, an office park's allowed in the M zone, so we'll, we'll just keep it the M zone. And you end up having the, they have their C C N Rs or covenants out there that, that do limit. And you end up having the they have their uh C C N Rs or covenants out there that that do limit what can be built. Again, not those things aren't regulated by the city, but are still meant to be uh uh to or at least limit what can be built. Why we ended up changing the zoning was we ended up having a number of ownership changes out there where you started to having, you know, a single entity starting to acquire multiple properties. And if if they got to a position of being able to uh have sort of controlling interest over the covenants, that they could then allow for like industrial uses out there, which we were concerned that um that might not be the best fit. So we at that time recommended that we end up going with the Business Research Park zoning over the whole thing, which is uh quite a bit more restrictive than the manufacturing zone. Uh, in this case, the the C two zone actually in it it's it's kind of a two edge or I guess two ways of looking at it. In some ways, it's more restrictive. In other ways, it's less restrictive, right? So it it allows a number of like retail uses that you wouldn't usually have in like a Business Research Park Zone. But it also doesn't allow some of the sort of light industrial uses you could have in a in the Business Research Park.
And then this this was uh true and they moved in, it would it it's a twenty four seven operation, right? There's beds there, people are overnight, there's going to be.
Right, yeah. So it's.
Four seven.
Right, it is a um um a facility that, yeah, people would stay overnight, yes. They do have as part of their programs an outpatient program as well. But most of it is for um is essentially inpatient and and they in their information, they provided um information about um uh those that they serve. Uh, so for example, as I mentioned, um they're known for their uh active duty military. Uh, so they actually have people fly in for the programs that that uh treat folks there um for like, you know, trauma situations, uh veterans, they have uh what they call uh for adults acute stabilization, uh D hoc detox rehab, and then they're outpatient. And just one other tidbit, they did say that uh of their patients, uh ninety percent are voluntary. So it's only ten that are essentially you you have to be here. I actually, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how if that's just through insurance company. I would assume it's the insurance, but that's that's a question I can ask.
See any other questions? So we'll continue on and go to application Z T three twenty twenty five.
Thank you. So this is an application from Manuel uh Julian. I'm I I try to get his last name right, but I'm probably butchering it. Uh, the request here is to change our uh zoning ordinance to allow for medical and dental office in the manufacturing zone. So there's a little bit of some similarities here with the the previous one. And in the request here to um is not just to allow those just uh across the board, but if the property is either partially or entirely within five hundred feet of residential use or zoning. And I'll provide a little more background here. So um if we have a couple of maps here that kind of explain how that would work if this were to to happen. Before I get into that, the the applicant here owns a a number of biz or buildings um in the Lake uh Lake Park area. So on the east side of uh Lake Park Boulevard. And here again, similar to Lake Park, um there's a number of vacancies or vacant buildings in that area. So I think it's the area between um twenty seven seventy south and thirty first south. So north of like the Maverick Center, um if you think of where the new H two O lofts are, it's on the east side of of Decatur Lake Drive there. So in in that area, again, there's some significant vacancy and they've had interests as they've looked at trying to um lease out space. They've had some interest from some medical users, not for large space, but you know, like a chiropractor, for example. And uh this would allow um the option of filling some of that office space with um with a medical or dental user. So just a little bit of the background as far as why we had that limitation to begin with. So it's back in twenty seventeen, we put that in for a couple of reasons. Uh, one is generally speaking, commercial areas tend to be closer to residential where you have patrons, right? Whereas manufacturing tends to be a little further away. But the other one is, and I'll just just be really candid here for a minute, uh around that time, the state was looking at trying to locate a permanent homeless facility in the city, and they were looking in industrial areas. And uh one sort of protective move, I guess you could say, we tried was oftentimes um when you have those shelters, they would look at having other support services nearby. And so if we could limit that ability, that was one way of trying to sort of protect the city, if you will. Well, um, the as far as that first issue of proximity, I mean, this this change is written really addresses that because it's saying you could only do this if you're next to a residential user or a residential zone. On the other issue, um again, frankly, in talking with legal, if the state really wanted to find a new facility, they're going to trump us anyway, right? If they're they're going to find a way to do it regardless, um if if they were to do that. So uh I don't know that um making this change is going to is going to make that easier or harder for this the state to to um to make that decision. So to get to this map, this um the areas in yellow here show existing residential zones uh or uses, which in in a lot of cases, it's zoned and used for residential. And then the gray areas are manufacturing. The next slide shows if you do that five hundred foot buffer, what does that look like? So you can see there are still some areas that are in the manufacturing that would be um that would be out of that five hundred foot space and would would not be able to to do this use or do medical or dental office. So to summarize again, the just quickly, the the request here is to allow medical and dental office in the M zone. But again, on the condition that the property is either uh entirely or partially within five hundred feet of a residential use or zone.
Any questions for Mr. Pastrick on this one? So instead of impacting the entire city for one office, could we make it a conditional use? So that they're reviewed as they come in, or is that more cumbersome than just doing it like this?
Well, the we could make medical and dental office a conditional use in the M zone. But um as a reminder for the council, essentially with a conditional use, it's still a permitted use. Like the city can't say no to a conditional use. It just means that the the planning commission can review and maybe attach conditions, but they they can be there, right? We we can't say no. Um, so but but yeah, that would be a possibility is to just allow them as a conditional use.
You not?
Do you think we need more medical and dental offices?
Um. Good question. We do get a a fair amount of of questions about about that use. And I what I will say is that we do, and I I know there's some information in your packet about this. We do have significant office vacancy in the city. So I think having at least the option of of filling some of that space, even though it may be a small amount with medical uses is a is a good thing, in my opinion. Um, but it's not definitely not going to fill at all, right? We've got.
In the building next door is is not nearly half full, I don't think. So they're looking for a place. We're going to rezone that. They can just move right in.
Right, right. Yeah. So there are, to your point, there are existing offices that are already zoned to allow that.
I wouldn't mind having more medical services. Many of my doctors that I see are outside the city. And if uh some of them can move here.
Yeah. Last I I say with you about because we have the hospital here in our city, so we need the medical support team. Maybe they need that so they can rent it out nearby our city and they can support. But you know, I think that's a good one for our city.
Thanks. Thank you.
You.
I'll go to application Z T four twenty twenty five. I'm turning the time to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you, Mayor. So uh seems like each year we're doing something in response to what the legislature does, and this year is a no exception. So there were a number of changes made in a variety of bills in this past legislative session. Uh, fortunately, this year, none of them too are shattering. Uh, but uh this uh code change would basically uh bring us into compliance with those state law changes. And and to summarize all, and this again is in your packet, but there are essentially four topics that were that were addressed. The first is that if if someone wants to propose a a land use that's not in our code, then we just specify that they can apply to change the code and and add that use to the code. Now, candidly, we already do that, but we're just just putting that into the code, saying that that's that's an option. So so really, no, no, in terms of how we do things, it's not really a change. It's just really uh clarifying that to comply with state code.
Was this aimed at different cities?
Sorry.
Is this bill aimed at different cities?
I'm not sure, actually. I'm not sure why why this one, what the impetus was behind this one.
Okay.
Um, the next one has to do with um bonding. And so basically just saying we have fifteen days to accept warranty work, right? So just putting a a timeframe on that. The third one is uh relating to parking, and this is something the state has not historically done. But I wouldn't be surprised if we see more of this where they're saying um if where you require parking in certain instances, you can't require the space to be any larger than, and then they actually specify dimensions, right? So um in in three of the four cases, we simply refer to state code and say, you know, and part of the reason for that is that we're anticipating the code to change again, right? And so instead of just constantly changing, we can just say, look at state code. And then the last one has to do with uh boundary adjustments and just clarifying that which boundary adjustments the city has to consent to approve and which ones we do not. So um that summarizes the those state code changes. Again, I'm happy to get more into the weeds, but um pretty pretty mundane stuff.
Yep. Any questions? So was there something in the parking one that also said we have to allow the two garage parking stalls to count? Or did I misunderstand?
It it basically is just saying there that that if um if you have a two car garage, you have to count those as parking spaces. So apparently there's a city out there that says if you do a garage, we're not going to count that as parking. Like, that seems kind of weird, but apparently there's a city out there that does that.
Well, that's not our practice. They're trying to correct somebody else's. Okay.
We when someone provides a garage, we do count that as part of their parking.
I thought we did. That's what I thought. It was weird that they were saying that. Okay. Okay. No more questions on those. We will move to Resolution twenty five dash one zero six and turn the time to Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you. I think this is my last one. So this might be, this might be a record for me. Um, so this is a a resolution to approve a a contract with Meridian Engineering to perform an out to survey on the property you can see here on the screen. And so um just to clarify for the council, I know during our um we had some discussion on this issue and the council requested that we um look at um just getting another quote. So we did that. And it was definitely in the ballpark, basically within uh within like two percent of of this one. And given given the uh amount of work that Meridian's done in this exact location, we uh would still like to recommend that uh Meridian be the the engineering firm that does this work. But again, it's looking at the area of the um the ridge and then the the parking areas surrounding the the amphitheater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? So thank you. Now go to our communications and turn the time over to Mr. Young to do a ace court update.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Wanted to give you a quick update on how our administrative court process works, uh where it came from and why it's been so effective. Uh, back in the mid nineties, we moved away from handling code violations in the criminal court system and created administrative process instead. The shift has made things much faster and more efficient. And the program was led by a paralegal and about nineteen ninety nine moved to an attorney, uh Ryan Robson that led the program. Um, by around twenty twenty, we transitioned back to a non lawyer administrative, non a non lawyer administration, which streamlined things even faster. Uh, today uh cases are heard within a few weeks versus to about six months in the old criminal courts. Uh, daily fines do accrue until the property is brought into compliance. Uh, cases are heard by the city appointed administrative law judge. The administrative law judge works with the property owners on a compliance plan, compliance plan and and not just fines. Uh, with this, there's no jury public defender rights. And if someone still does not comply, we do file a notice of non compliance with the county recorder, which blocks them from selling or refinancing the property until the uh violations have been resolved and fixed. And there's the process after the notice of violation and the notice of violation is what we issue to property owners. That explains in detail the problems and also gives solutions on how to fix them. But once the compliance period expires, the case is then at that point forwarded to the court. A notice of non compliance is filed with the county recorder. Then a court date is scheduled and the notice of the hearing is sent to the property owner. Uh, the day of court, the officer will present his case to the uh administrative law judge. And the property owners are given an opportunity to respond. Uh, after hearing both sides, the administrative law judge will issue his final ruling. And the judgment of that ruling is mailed to the property owner. A property owner has a set period of time to appeal with the third district court. And once that appeal window is closed, the officer may proceed with the enforcement of what has directed in the judgment order. A few of the things that tools that does help is the quick court orders to abate the nuisance. Uh, baitment costs are added as links to the property tax. Uh, we do have a third party agency which helps us collect fines and fees. And uh this program has kind of become a model for other cities within the state. We get a lot of phone calls with questions on how our administrative court process works. And then this is a number of cases over the past few years. Uh, the past, well, year, two years, cases have been a little bit lower than as they were before. Uh, but this process has uh kept our property, our community in compliance. And that is it. Is there any questions?
Any questions on this portion?
It it might be a whole other topic, but can you talk a little bit about what happens? Get you to the notice of violation.
So at first.
Time frame between an issue and notice of violation and then kind of the timeframe for notice violation to.
So first they're issued a courtesy notice and they're given minimum of two weeks to come in compliance. And then at that point, if it's still not in compliance, that's when they're issued a notice of violation, which also gives them a minimum of two weeks to come in compliance before it is issued and be sent to court.
So four weeks to get it under control before it's sent to the ALJ.
Correct, yes. Minimum of four weeks. Minimum of four weeks.
How often ever do they?
We've only had a few that have appealed. And the outcome, we still were able to proceed with the enforcement of the original judgment. Thank you.
I'll turn the time over to Chief Jacobs for our parking compliance.
Good evening. Colleen Jacobs, Chief of Police, and I am here with a parking compliance update. Just an overview of the program. We have four parking compliance specialists. They work Monday through Saturday, six AM to eight PM. And the program is basically complaint-driven. They respond to complaints, and once they are responding to a complaint, they'll look up and down the street for any other violations, address those, and then move on to the next complaint. So most of, most of the complaints that come in on the days that they are working, they get to same day. And then this program from the beginning has been education-focused. Here's some numbers for both two thousand and twenty-four and year-to-date this year so far. How many tickets have been written? And that's per violation, warnings as well. And if if they see a vehicle that's got multiple violations, oftentimes they'll write one ticket for a violation and then warn them on the other ones as part of the education component. And then the dollar amounts as far as how much is due for the tickets that have been issued, and then how much has been collected. And then for those of you that are doing the math real quick, this is a revenue source, but it is not a revenue source that pays for the program. It it costs about fifty thousand dollars a year to run the program, and that does not include any of the one-time costs as far as car and computer software equipment, that sort of thing. That's just the the salary and benefits for the compliance officers. So one of the questions that was asked is if we need more, more officers would be more compliance, and we could probably extend their service hours from, oops, from eight PM probably to ten PM, and they could work on Sundays if if we had more officers to do it. But with the four, they stagger their shifts so that they cover those hours. And then we also try not to have them out in the dark, just as a safety matter. So are there any, any questions?
And do our regular patrol officers, can they write parking tickets?
They cannot. Since we went to the civil program, it's a completely standalone program that the, we would have to to get both hardware and software for each individual patrol officer for them to be able to write parking citations.
They could call in the complaint.
Yes, they do pass along the complaints to the parking compliance officers. And they've streamlined the complaint process. They can do it online through City Works or through parking compliance email, and they receive those and respond to them.
So what is the email to want to report a complaint?
It's parkingcompliance@wvc-ut.gov.
Is that on the website?
Yes.
I look for it.
Okay.
Someone to chat.
Okay, yeah, there's, there's actually a click-through as far as file a complaint or a parking complaint, and it takes you over to the City Works, and you click on the map to show where the complaint is and.
So it sounds like our current hours of service, we've got enough officers to handle complaints during those hours.
Yes, they feel like they're on top of the complaints, and they're able to respond to them same day.
See any other comments? So thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now go to our council calendar. Was there any concerns or discussion? Seeing none, our potential future agenda items. Anybody have anything? Okay.
There he is. It's been a good year since we've talked about Bangator Highway and forty-one to California. Last time I talked to you, Doc, about the pedestrian tunnels, they said, we're going to make that decision later. Well, it's been later, so I wonder if we can.
An update?
Yeah, get an update. Encourage them to not have pedestrian tunnels again.
Yes.
I would like us to discuss some emergency help for the West Valley Performing Arts Theater. They've come into some difficult situation, which I don't want to go into detail here. But they need, they need some assistance again. And I'd like us to to discuss it.
Okay, that'd be probably a closed session.
I don't know what will or what will session discussion.
No, okay.
But we can get back to you.
Well, if you let them know what your concerns are, maybe we can.
So in an open session, I'd like us to talk about
Okay.
some funding that would help them. Right now, they have some donors who would be willing to to give and and do a two-times match, whatever the city gives. And so it's a, it's a great opportunity to to triple our, our effect size by what we, by what we donate. These other donors, they want to see support from the city too. And that would help them. They're in a, they're in a difficult situation. They furloughed their staff to make some setbacks. But they could really use our support.
Not on the communication? Anything else?
Mentioned it before, and so it's on the mind, but you know, abatement district is also, we need to make a presentation in council meeting. I'm talking to Nicole about it. Property taxes.
Okay. That's what we did for the water district, basically?
Basically, exactly.
Okay, and you have that information to be able to, okay, schedule it?
Yep.
Okay.
Much as water district.
Probably not. Okay, seeing nothing else, council reports? Yes.
I had a nice tour of Kennicott, where they invited the city to come. I went with some of our staff members. I recommend that you get out there. The visitor center is now open. You make an appointment with them. They'll do another West Valley City Day next year. I thought it was a worthwhile tour.
Pardon?
I wanted to attend that. My job keeps getting in the way of things going.
Sometimes time schedules get in the way of things.
Little further report on heat of abatement. Heatos have been down this year due to the weather. But we have had some West Nile virus found. Nothing in West Valley yet.
Chickens or people?
You know, I didn't say it. Just said they were found, so they're probably in the mosquitoes, said they found mosquitoes.
And were just trapped?
Yeah, just trapped, but it's Cash Valley, some down south, so. They're all around us, but mosquitoes don't know limits. We can't keep them out, so he will, district will notify me if anything is found in our traps. And I'll let Sam know and go from there to get information.
I attended the Veterans Day committee last week. I'm pretty good. We've discussed ideas for the Veterans Day dinner. And guys have ideas, their thoughts. Also, on August fourteenth is the Veterans Memorial Ribbon Cutting for the Coak Tucker statue.
That was Coak Tucker Day? August fourteenth? I believe so. I think that's what Harry told me way back in the day, so.
Probably every year, yeah.
Yeah. I went to the farmer's market again. I spent too much money. I've decided to not take my card and just take a certain amount of cash. It has been good. So I have, I chose to go around to the ice cream social. I had a plan for two places, got to the one too early, so I went to the fitness center, thinking I would go back to the community building over in the park. And I talked to too many people at the fitness center, so I didn't make it to two, but it was really well received. I think it's a great event for the employees, as an employee appreciation, and so by the end, I'll hit them all. Let's just stop talking so much. And then we had the ribbon cutting for Cascade Collision up just west of fifty-six hundred West and forty-seventh. Building is beautiful. If you work on cars, you just drool, like, I want this at my house. But it's a good location for them. I don't think we really have that business up in that area, so it was a great placement. I guess there's thirteenth location in Utah, so very nice. And that's about it. So nobody else? We'll go, we don't need a closed session today, correct? Okay, so we just have one more motion.
Move to it, Jim.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned.